Good evening. Welcome to the October thirteenth, 2022 meeting of the Rutherford County Commissioners. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Chapman Romell McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather in this assembly this evening. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, for without you we are nothing. We ask that you give us the wisdom to make the best decisions for our county on this evening and every day that we serve. Let us all be reminded that we are servants here on this earth, just as you were. We thank you, Lord, for mentors that come and go throughout our lifetime, whether they're a family member, church, or community leader, or even educators. We have a great individual in our midst this evening that we would like to honor and say thank you for. He has mentored so many individuals over the past many years. So let us remember that mentor leadership is all about serving, because Jesus said, "For even the son of man came not to be served, but to serve others and to give his life as a ransom for many." So I ask you to be with us, to be with our county, our state, and our country. In your name, amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars fill the blue. God keep you strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you. You may be seated. We would call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Shirena.
Here.
Kavanaugh Quorum, twenty-one present.
Thank you. This time, we need the reading and approval of our minutes, and I'll call on our Chairman of the Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed these minutes with Rick Spence and find everything to be in order. My motion is to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our last meeting. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any objection? Motion to approve carries. The next item...
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
I was going to ask a question on the motion.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to...
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, I just wanted to have it read into the record that if there's a way that we can get the minutes in a timely fashion so that we can review them prior to this meeting, I would appreciate that, because I was just rushing trying to go through the minutes because I didn't have them before today. So I'm not sure what the process is, but if we can look at that and revamp it so that we can get it in a timely fashion, so we can do our due diligence, I'd appreciate it.
The process says we're a little tardy, and that's one of the things that the Steering Committee is examining right now, working on the agenda, minutes, and maybe even a potential change in the schedule to the way the commission meets. Thank you for bringing that up. Anything else? Next item on our agenda is a resolution of recognition for Robert Bud Rakes, and this is why most of us are here tonight, I would say. And let me just say, if you're a Bulldog and you know it, the results will surely show it. I want to ask a couple of folks to join us. Commissioner Carl Boyd is Bud Rakes' current commissioner, and of course, everyone knows Mayor Joe Carr, and Harry Gill, former principal, teacher, principal, and superintendent of the school system, is going to make a few remarks with us tonight. One other thing, any commissioner, current commissioner that is seated and is a Smyrna High graduate, I want you to join us. Any former commissioner of the Rutherford County Commission, if you're here and you are a Smyrna High graduate, would you please join us? These are examples of some of the people and persons who Bud Rakes' life has influenced through the years. Any local elected official here tonight that is a Smyrna High graduate, if you are, please stand up. Thank you. Any, I say Mike Sparks back there, especially Mike, surprised you're not at the Republican Meeting. I'm glad you're here instead of there. Any Smyrna High graduate, any Smyrna High graduate, please stand. Harry Gill is a graduate of Smyrna, and I think he got out in 1968, if I'm not mistaken, escaped in '68. I'm a 1966 graduate, and I think Carl is a '77 graduate. Joe?
Sixty-five.
Joshua?
Ninety-nine.
Anthony?
Sixty-nine.
Joe was going to have to make an honorary member of...
Reverend Al Warrior, seventy-six.
Harry, as we said, is a '68.
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, and now?
Sixty-nine.
Nineteen sixty-nine. Thank you. There are some things that we're going to be talking about tonight, and let me just say that this is a little bit unusual. We do resolutions of appreciation fairly often, and most of them are well deserved. This is a little different. It's more than a resolution of appreciation. It's a resolution in appreciation of a man who's dedicated his life to the service of Rutherford County, more specifically, the area of Smyrna. Not only has he dedicated his life, but he's also dedicated his family to that service as well, and I think many of them has followed in his footsteps. And I think some of his family are here tonight, and if they're here, I would appreciate you coming up. I think his two daughters are here, and their spouses, if you don't mind joining us tonight. We have Vicki and Kimberly, and I think their husbands are, if I'm not mistaken, and I can read my own writing, are Terry and Robert. Is that correct?
Yes.
Glad you guys are here. And I guess last but not least, Mr. Bud Rakes, would you please join us? This time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Harry, and Harry's got a few remarks, I think, to make, and I think they're mostly personal.
Mr. Rakes and I go way, way back. He started out as my coach and later was my principal when I was coaching at Smyrna High School. And last nine years of my career, he and I worked closely together. He was at Smyrna High and I was at the Board of Education. And when I think of Mr. Rakes, the word that comes to mind is a legend. He is truly a legend. Fifty-two years he spent in education in Smyrna. I shouldn't tell this, but he was born in '38, which isn't much before me, and thirty-seven, pardon me, sir. He used to do that when I was coaching. He'd correct me, too. And so anyway, was a quarterback on the football team in high school and was a basketball guard. Nineteen sixty, he became the head, a coach at Smyrna High School after finishing at MTSU. Mr. McWilliams, the great Mr. McWilliams, brought him on board. Two years later, I believe it was, Mr. Rakes became the head football coach and the head basketball coach at Smyrna High School. And I will tell you, having played for him, and Allen can attest to this, his fall practices were brutal. We'd hit it in the morning at seven and come back at five in the afternoon for two or three more hours of that stuff. And I got so tired of hearing, "Run that play again, run that play again, run it again." But he made, he made men out of us. We won a lot of games. One game in particular that stands out to me, I will never forget, his mother passed. We were playing Dixon County. Each team was undefeated, and we weren't certain he would make the game, but he did. And we were so determined to win that game for him. That's the level of respect we had for him, and we ended up beating them thirty-four to nothing, and I'm absolutely sure we could have beat the Green Bay Packers that night for him. Popped him pretty good, didn't we, Coach?
Sure did.
So he remained in that position to seventy-three, when sadly, tragically, Mr. McWilliams passed, and as often the case for a principal's job, people started lobbying for the job, and thank goodness, the right man got the job, Mr. Rakes. Started in seventy-three. I don't know, we probably had five hundred kids in the school then, something like that. He was the principal for, I want to say, thirty-eight years. It could have been thirty-seven, one or the other. And the last year, he had over two thousand kids. He was able to adjust, acclimate his management style to fit the new generation of kids, and I would say that he didn't sacrifice principal. He was a principled man. He didn't care who you were or where you came from, you were going to abide by the rules. And my own son went to Smyrna High, played on the two-state championship football teams, and I cautioned him about ever trying to use his dad's position to get by with anything. And when they won the state, Coach Shadow was told, "Boys, I'm giving you the week off. You guys stay up here and hang around the field house, or if you get out and go to the cafeteria, just stay hidden." Well, he was caught walking down the hall with another boy and confronted, and he explained that story to him, and the guy said, "Well, get on back to the field house." And as he turned around, he said, "Well, I guess he doesn't know who my dad is, does he?" Well, that was a colossal blunder. He ended up in front of Mr. Rakes, and Mr. Rakes said, "I don't care who your dad is," he said. "Matter of fact, if I have to, I'll bust your tail like I did his." And he did. And I didn't deserve it either. Anyway, Mr. Rakes was absolutely incredible to work for as a principal. He did such remarkable things. I want to wrap this up so he can speak. I'll never forget, he said, "Keep on." I'll never forget, though, and I was asked a million times, "When is Mr. Rakes going to retire? Is he going to stay forever?" And people were hoping that he would, and I would give him the same answer. I said, "He keeps things close to the vest. He hadn't told me one of these days he will, I'm sure." Two thousand and ten, we put out a correspondence to all the employees. "If you intend to retire, we need to have your notification by Friday, May fifteenth," whatever the day was. On Tuesday, he called Joyce Michaels and said, "Is Mr. Gill there?" Said, "I'd like to meet with him." And I asked Joyce, I said, "Ask him if he wants to come down there or wants to come up here." And he came up, and we talked about retirement, first time I talked to him about it. We actually got two assistant superintendents to go over some numbers, and he was literally working for fifteen percent of his salary. If he would just, if he would retire, he's going to draw pretty much eighty-five percent of his salary. So we went over that, and I said, "Well, you think about it." On Friday, he came back and he handed me a letter saying, "I'm retiring." He said, "I've thought about it a lot." He said, "But if you don't mind, would you hold on to that until Monday morning?" And I said, "Certainly." And I stuck it in my desk drawer. And I guess on eight oh two, Monday morning, Ms. Michael said, "Mr. Gill, you got a call from Mr. Rakes." And I picked the phone up, and I said, "Don't worry, I'm already starting to shred the letter." And he stayed another year. And two thousand and eleven would become his last year. He was decorated in many capacities, in the TWSAA Hall of Fame, Smyrna High Hall of Fame, the stadium's named after him, many other accolades. And I think it's safe to say that he is respected, revered, loved by many people, and it was an honor to work with him in every, every sense of the word. So, Mr. Rakes, congratulations on your honor, and hope you're around for another one in about another ten years.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did leave one thing. I do want to acknowledge his two daughters, as did Commissioner Phillips, Vicki and Kimber, great girls in school, cheerleaders, near the top of their class, if not on the top of their class academically, and as Jeff said, they had to endure a lot, because when football season ended, Mr. Rakes went directly into basketball, and Mr. Rakes and the girls were remarkable.
Thank you, Harry. Next, we're going to ask Mayor Carr to give a particular, special recognition tonight before we actually get into the resolution. I've been up here a long time, and this is the third time that I remember this being done by a county mayor, so Mayor Carr.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, it's, listening to Harry speak about Mr. Rakes, it reminds me of the role that educators play in the development of our lives and our youth and our children and our grandchildren. And so I'm looking out here, and I see the greatness that you have bestowed on this county, what you've given us. And I see it in Don Odom. I see it in Bill Spurlock, and I'm sure there are many educators out there who you've had an impact on, and just the hundreds and thousands of children that you've impacted. And I can't help but think, what a better legacy to have than the impact you've had on raising young men and young women to be young men and young women. And so there's no higher honor that we, as a body, can bestow on any individual than the following. This is a proclamation, whereas Robert Bud Rakes, a lifelong resident of Rutherford County and educator for fifty-two monumental years, and whereas Bud served as a role model for countless number of students, encouraging each to attain the highest goals. And whereas Bud received many honors and accolades during his career, including admission to the TWSAA Hall of Fame, the Smyrna High School Hall of Fame, the AF Bridges Principals' Award, along with many other awards. And whereas, as a fifty-two-year educator, Bud has demonstrated in countless ways his dedication to his community, family, students, and many others. Bud has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages. Now, therefore, I, Joe Carr, Mayor of Rutherford County, do hereby proclaim October thirteenth, 2022, as Robert Bud Rakes Day. Thank you.
There are things in life that naturally go together, like springtime in baseball, fall in football, and peanut butter and jelly. The same is true for Robert Bud Rakes and Smyrna High School. In fact, most people wouldn't be surprised if Mr. Rakes bled purple and gold. Mr. Rakes graduated as a student from Smyrna in nineteen fifty-six, when it was known by most as the Old Rock School, and served grades one through twelve. He left only to complete a degree at Middle Tennessee State College before returning to Smyrna High to teach. Over the years, he taught health, science, physical education, as well as becoming an accomplished coach in both basketball and football. He also became close to a principal back in those days, a day's named Mr. McWilliams. Of course, Mr. Mc was well-known, and Mr. Rakes eventually served as the unofficial assistant principal back before we had assistant principals. In fact, it was Mr. Mc who convinced Bud that he should go back to school to get his master's degree. In October of nineteen seventy-three, the leadership of the school changed suddenly and unexpectedly when Mr. Mc passed. Mr. Rakes took over as principal shortly after Mr. Mc's passing, and Mr. Rakes has dedicated his life to education and has made Smyrna High a place of pride and joy, the place that it is today. He believes it is important for a leader to be a good role model for others in the education profession. A quote, "Show respect, lead by example, support the things that are done right. If you make a mistake, admit it and move on and never try to cover it up." Mr. Rakes finally decided to retire in 2011 after fifty-two years of service at Smyrna High School, and looked for ways to continue his service to Smyrna and Rutherford County because, in his words, "To be honest, I don't have any hobbies. School has always been my hobby. I've never thought of it as a job." Bud and his wife Margaret were Smyrna High School sweethearts, married for fifty-nine years until her passing in 2018. Ms. Margaret was secretary at Smyrna High School for almost thirty years. Their marriage was blessed with two children, Vicki Phan, which is a Smyrna High graduate in nineteen seventy-nine, and her husband Terry Kimberly Buehler, nineteen eighty-three graduate, and her husband Robert, plus four grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Mr. Rakes spent his entire life dedicated to Smyrna High School. Mr. Rakes was inducted into the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Hall of Fame for his exceptional contributions to student athletes as a coach and as administrator. Anybody remember Bud's father? Allen, I bet you probably do. Bud's father was named Rooker Rakes. He served as a county commissioner from the Smyrna area throughout the nineteen seventies and the eighties. And in Bud's thirty-seven years as principal, get this, there's been over ten thousand young men and women who have graduated from Smyrna High School. Let me say that again. Ten thousand have graduated from Smyrna High School from the thirty-seven years he was principal there. And most of us are grateful for the role model that Mr. Rakes played in our lives. Mr. Rakes, Bud, thank you for your lifetime of service, your dedication, commitment, loyalty, and unwavering love to Smyrna and Rutherford County. Now, after all that, let me get to this proclamation. This says resolution of appreciation, but it's really a resolution of appreciation for a lifetime of service to Rutherford County. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize and celebrate those individuals who make a profound impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County. This is a lot of whereas's for all you guys that are not familiar with this. Whereas Bud L. Rakes, Robert L. Bud Rakes, a native of Smyrna, has served all of Rutherford County with dedication and distinction for over fifty-two years. Whereas Mr. Rakes was a brilliant scholar, educator, mentor, and innovator who has been a lifelong ambassador for quality education. Mr. Rakes established a dedicated vocational career and technical education model for over forty years. He spearheaded the professional learning community process and ideals, years before the practice was officially implemented across Rutherford County. Whereas Mr. Rakes inspired to enhance the lives of every teacher, staff member, student, and family connected with Smyrna High School, his deep commitment to the success of his teachers and students will remain unmatched, with his sole focus being solid education and a better future for all. He was proactive as an advocate for students who struggled and needed an extra hand or an extra support. The spirit of community and belonging that he installed in the Bulldog family was strengthened by his consistent presence on the campus. Whether it was a parent-teacher conference, a swim meet, or celebrating a state championship, he was the consummate cheerleader and supporter for all things Smyrna High School. Whereas Mr. Rakes' wife, Margaret, was a true partner to him, and she was always at his side, both professionally and personally. His many accomplishments were only made possible through the love, support, and sacrifices of Ms. Margaret and their daughters Vicki and Kimberly. Whereas Mr. Rakes, even in retirement, remains a positive influence and role model as he continues to enrich lives. Robert was awarded many honors in his career. In two thousand and eleven, he was admitted to the TWSAA Hall of Fame, and in 2018, he was inducted into the Smyrna High Hall of Fame. He is a recipient of the AF Bridges Principals' Award and served multiple terms as president of the Rutherford County Secondary Principals' Association. The football stadium is named Robert L. Rakes, who was both coach, student, and player at Smyrna High. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this thirteenth day of October, 2022, does hereby extend deep and sincere appreciation to Robert L. Bud Rakes for his legacy of service to the citizens of Rutherford County, and we wish him much success and happiness in all of his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to Mr. Rakes by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this thirteenth day of October, 2022. Carl, move to approve?
Move different.
Need a second?
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and really, I thank you, and I want you to be part of this, because I never did feel like I was what all he said about me, but my biggest thing was to try to hire good people. If you hire good people, most time, you're going to be successful. And the teachers we had at Smyrna High School, most of them, can't get a hundred percent from everybody, and the administrators, same way. But they made an extreme effort to keep the Smyrna High tradition alive. But I was taught from my early years to try to do your best, admit what you've done, and go on, and that's pretty much what I live by and pretty much what my wife live by. And our biggest joy was, of course, having our two girls, but next to that was me being at Smyrna High. When I was in the seventh grade, that's when I decided in my life I wanted to teach and coach, and I wanted to do it at Smyrna and have anywhere else I wanted to go. Didn't even think about it. But Mr. McWilliams, and most people were scared of Mr. Mc. He was sort of one time, they said he could walk down the hall and you couldn't hear a mouse pee on cotton. Because when he clicked, he had those wind shoes on and that little heel... Because when he clicked, he had those wind shoes on and that little heel metal that was in those thing, you'd hear it come. Boy, everything would get it, as quiet as a mouse, and teachers were pretty much that way too with him. I'm talking about them adhering to him, not vice versa. But I do want to thank all of you for being here, and I thank our family, my grandchildren, my great-grandson, and their husbands and all that's made my life what it is, and look forward, hoping to live a few more years. I'm 85 years old. I can't believe I'm that old, like most of you look back at your ages, and probably you can't believe how old you are, whatever age you are. And it was, seemed like it was just a short time ago that I was at Smyrna, but it sure passed fast, 11 years since then. So, thank you all for coming and let you all know you're very much and was very much of my life. And I enjoy when I'm out in public seeing the ones that have graduated or either went to Smyrna, and we usually spend a few minutes talking. Most time when I go out, I figure it'll be about an hour longer than what I normally are, especially Walmart. And, but I've enjoyed every minute of my life. I did enjoy my wife passing away. She was a great influence and did a lot as secretary. She actually probably knew more than I did when I became principal because she had worked for Mr. Mac, and she did most of the things that he wanted, and of course, she was leery of him a little bit too. But I became friends with his, and some of them still can't figure out how he and I could be friends. But it was great working for him. He was a great principal, and he actually changed Smyrna High from what it was in years past. I remember that students used to leave school when they got ready, just walk out. Well, when Mr. Mac got there, they didn't walk out but once.[728.93][728.93](LAUGHTER). He didn't put up with it. And he's the one that really changed Smyrna High for what it is or was, and I just tried to follow his footsteps. So, thank all of you for being here, and again, thank you.[743.43][743.43](APPLAUSE). I'm supposed to have an operation next Friday. They don't change it here.[770.63][770.63](LAUGHTER).[771.63][771.63](CROWD CHUCKLES).
All those that are here for the presentation, y'all are welcome to stay or can leave at this time. It's your pleasure. We're about five minutes late, but we actually did better than I thought we would. We're about five minutes late, and we'll go ahead and get started back with our business, and I'll call on our planning director, Doug Demossi.[880.32][880.32](CROWD VOICE) Aye. And if you're keeping up, of course, we're on item K, I believe it is now. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you stated, we do have one rezoning application for your consideration tonight. This is by Joe DeLamos for North Star Real Estate Advisors located along 6495 Miller Road. This is on the west side of Interstate 24, right off of Epsomil Road. It's currently zoned residential medium density, or RM, and they're asking for employment and activity center zoning, which is EAC, and the size of the property is about eight acres. Applicant would like to zone this property to build an office, excuse me, and storage area, like a recently approved site plan on the other side of the interstate along Miller Lane. There is a site plan, just to serve as an example for the type of development that they're looking for in your agenda packets on your iPads. Information provided by the applicant indicates they would like to build a pre-engineered metal building with offices and work bays. They don't have a committed end user at this time, but they do anticipate someone in the equipment business, truck service, building supply, or something similar. I've also included a concept plan with your agenda packets. Now, understand, this is not a planned development, so this is not a binding site plan, but this does give you an idea of how the applicant would like to move forward with developing the property. The concept plan does show two connections to Miller Road. We have relayed some concerns about larger vehicles, tractor-trailers, whatnot, turning into and out of the subject property. We do expect that a traffic study or something similar, just analyzing how the trucks and vehicles are going to get in and out of the property, will be submitted with an application for site plan should this application for rezoning be approved, and all vehicular and parking areas would have to meet our regulations. The same with the landscaping. These type properties, the zoning, EAC, would require a Type II buffer along residentially zoned property lines, which has an average width of 30 feet, which can be reduced to a minimum of 15 feet if they use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence, something like that. Interior landscaping is also based off the off-street parking and vehicular use areas. This is really only going to apply to the southern property line, as most of the surrounding property is already zoned the same as what he's asking for, and our performance standards would also apply. Planning Commission did ask the applicant about any potential clients. Again, the client answered that there weren't any at this time. There's also some questions about whether a site plan would be required, and as I stated, it would be, and we also can require a traffic study if we do feel that one is warranted whenever we do see a site plan. After those questions were answered, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi?[1053.01][1053.01](CROWD NOISES). Seeing no questions, we're ready for our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 22-022, rezoning request for Joe DeLamos. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward.[1082.11][1082.11](CROWD NOISES). Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.[1090.33][1090.33](CROWD NOISES). Can't remember whose district this is in.
Mr. Chairman.
Jonathan.
That would be my district. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.[1114.33][1114.33](APPLAUSE). Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. Next on our agenda is public comments. We've had one individual sign up, Chuck Isbell, and I think he's wanting to speak on a resolution that was passed last year that deals with Halloween speed limits, if I'm not mistaken. Three minutes.
I wanted to say thank you for having me back. It's been a year and four months since I've been here. Thank you Mayor Carr for meeting with me the other day. Over this last year and four months, I've gotten to know quite a few of you very well, some of you, you know, not as well. But we worked last year, where my ex-wife worked with Michael Rather, about getting the resolution passed for Halloween, and I would like y'all to take that in consideration You know, it's really hard. We're coming up on two years since this happened, and, you know, it just doesn't get easier. It's not, and there's all these reminders of it out there every day, and, you know, I walk past his room, and it's, you know, it's basically the way he left it, you know, and no parent should have to go through what we've went through as far as what we've had to do with that, and the reason was because, you know, somebody was negligent in speeding. If you get hit at 25 miles an hour, you have a 10% chance of death. If you get hit at 30, it goes up to 25%. It jumps 15% just between that 5 miles an hour, you know? So, that's one reason why I'm working on the, you know, some of the other things in the county that I'm trying to, you know, achieve as far as changing the speed limit on residential roads. Some places are better than others, some cities are better than others, but, you know, it's just hard. You know, it's just hard, and, you know, every time I hear or see something in the news about somebody getting hit or killed, or a child getting hurt, you know, like the first three days of school, we had three kids run over, one was a fatality. It's hard. It's, you know, we, I went to the visitation of the little girl that was killed, and it was in the same room and the same everything that my son was in, and no parent should have to go through that, and we went in there and talked to those, the parents for that child to let them know they weren't alone. They weren't alone. I was, you know, we went months before we found anybody that had went through what we'd went through, and that poor child was, you know, very close in age of Nate. It was a very similar situation in a lot of ways, and it was just, you know, it was a hard couple of weeks for me personally. You know, I got to relive everything again, and, you know, and the thing is, is that we need to take in consideration for Halloween, or even everyday driving, that people need to slow down. We need to be cognizant of what's going on around us. You don't know when a child's going to run out in front of you. You don't know when a child is going to do something stupid. You just, you don't know that. If you're doing something stupid, you know, speeding, texting, you know, whatever the gambit of things that people do, you know, you need to be mindful of that, because once you hit a child or hit anybody, you're going to become a very important person, not for the reasons that you want, but for what happened. And if you're running late and you hit somebody, you're really going to be late. You're going to be tied up for hours, days, weeks, depending on the situation. And so, I would, you know, those of you that I have not gotten to talk to that want to talk to me, I can give you my card, and we can set up a time and talk. I'm more happy, you can talk to your fellow commissioners that know me. I mean, I've, like I said, I've gotten to know most of you out here, and I want to say thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbell. Michael, do you have any follow-up on that? The resolution that was passed last year is still in effect, and you might want to highlight what it was.
Well, what it was, was on Halloween night, around and in residential neighborhoods, the speed limit was 25 miles an hour. I do want to say, my oldest son is 24. When he was two, so it's 22 years ago, we lived in Thompson Square subdivision, and I came down Bridget Drive with my son in a car seat in the back and my wife in the car, and I'm probably doing 15 or 12, 15 or less, definitely less. And we almost got to our house, and there was a house that had some big bushes at the end of the driveway, and we're just closing down through there, and all of a sudden, there's a kid on a bicycle in front of me, ended up on my hood.[1461.24][1461.24](CROWD NOISES). He was fine. Bonks, scrapes, but he was fine. Had I not been going the speed I was going, as Chuck mentioned, every five miles could mean a death. I hit a kid that was okay, and I have never gotten over it. My son's in the backseat screaming. You don't want to go through that either, but I definitely don't want to be the parent of a child that got run over because somebody has to get somewhere so quick, they think. And we see it every day. I've had probably 10 calls yesterday on Council Pike. Apparently, there was a wreck there, car ran off the road, and there were kids out there waiting on the bus. And Chief Spence, you and I'll be talking about that soon, but, like I said, when the resolution was presented, slow your roll. There's nowhere you have to be that quick, and, you know, we, on the interstate, we see people, I see people passing me just to get one car in front of me. Why? Slow down. You don't want to be on my end to hit a kid. You certainly don't want to be on Chuck's end and his wife and his family. Slow down, care about others. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michael. Elections and confirmations, call on our steering committee, Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we begin with elections and confirmations. Item number one, elections of notaries. Listings of notaries may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.[1610.01][1610.01](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number two, steering, we'd like to confirm Thomas Rowe for CCCR C Board to fill a retiring member's term, which will be in July 1st, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Thomas Rowe to the CCR Board. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1635.86][1635.86](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries.
Item three, steering, we'd like to confirm County Commissioner Paul Johnson as the CCCR C Board Commission representative. This is a co-terminus term. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Paul Johnson to the CCR Board. Questions? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1662.33][1662.33](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number four, steering, we'd like to confirm Royce Johnson to the Codes Enforcement, Adjustment, and Appeals Board. This is a three-year term, expires November 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Royce Johnson to the Codes Enforcement, Adjustment, and Appeals Board. Any comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1690.83][1690.83](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries.
Item number five, we would also like to confirm Commissioner Anthony Johnson to the Agriculture Advisory Board. This is a two-year term, expires December 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Anthony Johnson to the Agricultural Advisory Board. Any other comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1717.51][1717.51](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number six, steering, we'd like to confirm the appointment of Commissioner Laura Davison to the Rutherford County Records Commission. This is an appointment by County Mayor Carr. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second, Commissioner Sharino, to appoint Laura Davison to the Rutherford County Records Commission. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1744.42][1744.42](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number seven, steering, we'd like to confirm Mark Lee as Road Board Representative to the Audit Committee. This is a two-year term, which expires September 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Mark Lee to the Road Board, as a Road Board Representative. Any comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.[1771.48][1771.48](APPLAUSE). Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number eight, we wish to confirm Claire Maxwell as School Board Representative to Audit Committee. This is also a two-year term, expiring September 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Claire Maxwell to the, as a School Board Representative to the Audit Committee. All those in favor of the motion to confirm, please say aye.[1798.53][1798.53](APPLAUSE).
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number nine, steering wishes to confirm Blair Haskins to the Audit Committee, citizen representative. This is a four-year term, expiring September 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Blair Haskins to the Audit Committee. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries.
Item number 10, we would like to confirm Commissioner Hope Oliver as County Commissioner Representative to the Audit Committee. This is a co-terminus position. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Hope Oliver as a County Commissioner Representative to the Audit Committee. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number 11, we'd like to also confirm Suzanne Van Driver, CPA, to the Audit Committee. This is a four-year term, which expires September 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Susan Van Driver, CPA, to the Audit Committee. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
Item number 12, we wish to confirm the appointment of Tiffany Coleman as Judicial Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second to confirm Tiffany Coleman as Judicial Commissioner. All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries. Thank you.
And item number 13, I'd like to announce one county commissioner vacancy on the Audit Committee. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of this committee.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Item I, resolution to approve our consent agenda, call on our chairman pro tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder, on the consent agenda, any commissioner can withhold one of the motions that we can put on, on the other business or the committee. You're more than welcome to call me if you see that you wanna have it withdrawn, and I will withdraw it. Having said all that, I have reviewed the items on the consent agenda, and without exception, my motion is to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Davison.
I need to abstain from item number 10.
So noted. Any other comments? We motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of that?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay. I have a question.
Commissioner Oliver.
I am new. Please explain to me this process one more time, the whole idea behind not looking at these things separately and looking at items together. Can you explain that to me again?
That's also a good point, and it follows up with your earlier comment. For those of you that are probably watching or listening and are not aware, we receive our consent agenda, I'm sorry, we receive our agenda items a day or two before the full commission meets. And the steering committee, at their meeting, I believe it was Tuesday night, started working on the process of dealing with that, giving more time for the agenda to be communicated, and then also the minutes to be followed up on. And that might require us to take a look at the way our schedule is set, and that's one of the things that steering committee is working on right now. But your point is well received. I think the agenda did not come out until yesterday. But once again, that's an item that we are working on.
Well, my question was, how does the consent agenda process work? Because there are several items here that are, looks like we're gonna vote on together. And so I'm just kinda curious about how the process works.
Let me see if I can handle that a little bit. Most of the items on the consent agenda, let me, we have our finance director here, and she could probably give us a better explanation than, than I could by fumbling around, so, if you would.
A lot of the items that are on the consent agenda are routine in nature. You see them over and over every year. I can just look down on here, and grants, we get many grants every single year. The impact is, it's budget neutral, we get revenues, appropriations, so those things pretty much, we will, and two, I'm gonna back up, these things that are on consent, if they have money attached to them, they've been seen by two committees. So 14, 14 of y'all, or 13, have already seen these items. And again, most of these are routine in nature, and don't have, I'm just kinda going down as we look. There are some things on insurance. There's a, the Insurance Committee is a recommending board, and they recommend to budget. And a lot of these things are, we have to have resolutions approved by the commission before the mayor can sign documents. So, again, routine in nature. As Commissioner Gooch said, if there's something that speaks to your heart, that you really want a little more in-depth, again, minutes are typically on the, on the chair point. So prior to meetings, like a budget meetings, they're out there. Or if there was something that came through public safety, I'd read those minutes. That gives you a good indication of kinda what's coming, when you see those things that come up under consent. For us in budget, if there is something that is going to impact the unassigned fund balance, which is the amount that's left for you to spend, available to spend, we do bring that to this body, and it will not show up on the consent. You should see, if there are anything with fund balances, probably restricted or committed, that it can only be spent for that purpose, we'll put those on consent. Again, it's already been through two committees. Is that good?
It's pretty good. I don't know how many years ago, Robert, help me if, if you could on this, every one of these items were read by resolution, and it would sometime take us two, two and a half hours just to read these items. And all of them were voted on unanimously to approve. So those are the type of items that we've decided to put on the consent agenda. It's also covered under your handbook rules on page eight, under consent agendas, and you can kind of review that. And if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you. But the thought of those items coming before you, a day or two before the commission meeting, is well received, and please believe me, steering committee, and it's, Commissioner Harris's committee is, is working on that, and will be working on that probably for the next couple of months, to see if we can come up with a better way to do it. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you please refresh my memory on the Box 100 agreement? That one, the title, it's not ringing a bell, and it's not in our iPad to siphon through that missing.
I didn't catch, which item was that?
Item 10, Box 100 Agreement.
I'm gonna let Commissioner Davison answer that, because she is much more of an expert than I am. She abstained, and you'll, you'll, you'll see the reason why, and it's the second.
So it is a contract between Box 100, Inc., which is a nonprofit rehab organization that started in Laverne, and is now gonna be expanding out into the county, that will be providing rehab for emergency responders, fire, police, things of that nature.
Thank you, I remember it now. I just needed that quick refresher, and it wasn't in our iPad, so.
Other questions? Other questions on the consent agenda? I think we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions? For this, we'll be on the board. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you, madam clerk. Item A, reports by standing committees. The first on our agenda is the Budget, Finance and Invest Committee, Commissioner Chairman Robert P.
Well, I was told I only have three minutes. I hope that's per item, but we'll try to make this as quickly as we can. One thing I do wanna remind you, as far as these consent agenda goes, it was really time-consuming to go through these. And then two, we used to read each item line by line, each, each one of the categories. We try to curtail that, but having said all that, anytime you have a question, or anything that's on that consent agenda, or even on this one, please ask the question. So the first is item L1A, resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general fund be amended as follows, for reappraisal, increased revenue, insurance proceeds, $6,300, a decrease to unassigned fund balance of $7,741, increased expenditures of lease payments, $7,071, and licenses, $7,000. And this was all for, that was for vehicle. Also, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $13,531, and an increased expenditures of other capital outlay of $13,531, and that was for pictometry. This is, all came out of the adjuster's office. Anyway, resolved this 13th day of October 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve item L1A. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you.
Our next item, L1B, resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Drug Control Fund be amended as follows, for drug enforcement, a decrease in restricted fund balance of $37,500, and increased expenditures for M&amp;R vehicles, $20,000, other charges, $2,500, and data processing equipment, $15,000. Resolved this 13th day of October 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item L1B. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is L1C. This was forwarded to us from our Road Board and the Highway Superintendent. Resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Highway Fund be amended as follows, capital outlay, increased expenditures for the highway equipment, $1,300,000, a decrease in assigned fund balance of $1,300,000. Resolved this 13th day of October 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move. This is for equipment. Commissioner Johnson, he's the chairman of our Road Board, and he can explain if anybody's got any question, but it's basically, these are four dump trucks and a fuel truck, and these are replacement vehicles coming out of their funds, not out of the county general.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Chairman P., thank you. This was approved unanimously by the Road Board, and I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve item L1C. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item L1D. This is a resolution that came from the Board of Education. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Educational Capital Projects Fund be amended according to the schedules attached. Here to is Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this 13th day of October 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item L1D. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
This last item, L1E, actually is an Emergency Management Performance Grant, American Rescue Plan Act Grant, and related general fund budget amendment. We actually, as a full commission, have voted on this, and agreed to take the money, and to pay, it's a 50% grant. We had already voted to do that, but we didn't have the exact figures. Now we have the figures, so I'll read this resolution. Whereas Rutherford County was awarded the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant, which is through the state allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act Grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, in the project amount of $44,450, which requires a 50% local match, and whereas the grant will be utilized to fence the perimeter of the Emergency Operations Center to create a single-point access to the complex. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to accept the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, for which the funding is through the state allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act Grant, in the project, in the project amount of $44,450, and requires a 50% local match. And further, that the general fund be amended as follows, to recognize the grant revenue, appropriate the funds, and fund the local county match. Increase to revenues to EMPGA, other federal, through state, $22,225, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $22,225, and increased expenditures for EMPGA, other supplies and materials, for $44,450. Resolved this 13th day of October 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item L1E. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Chairman, that concludes our business on budget.
What's your next meeting date, Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna have to look back and see. Let me sit down and look at my calendar, and I'll let you know in a moment.
Thursday, the 10th. Thursday, the 10th. Item A, two, Health and Education. Chairman Philip Dodd, when's your meeting date? When's your meeting date? It's on the 24th of this month. Alan, are you looking it up real quick? Item L4, Property Management. Any, any, any report? Very good. Item L4, Public Safety. Chairman Pettish Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I know when my next meeting date is October the 24th, because that's my birthday. But while I'm tonight, I want to come to you and show you something that's coming, I want you to see. Some of you probably have already seen it on Facebook, you probably have seen it in your email or whatever. But Saturday evening, I was out in my district watching our first responders involved in doing the job they're supposed to be doing. And I'm not talking just about our fire department, but also our EMS and everything. Everybody was working together, they were doing what they were supposed to be doing, they were working like a fine clock. And I stood there and watched that, and then I remembered exactly what was sent to me by our chief. Across this nation, there is a difficult job out there now of getting first responders to come to employment within our ranks, to do the job that we want done. And you can talk to anyone within the sheriff's department, the ambulance service, or the fire department of getting these individuals to come to work for you. And right here in Rutherford County, we have individuals that are trying to do this. They're trying to find every idea, everything they can, to keep people employed with them, and trying to find the best. Well, our fire and rescue come up with an idea, but it was come up, the idea came around by those individuals who work there themselves. And they said, can we tell our story, who we are, and why we work here? And what I want to show you tonight is a video that those guys did themselves, their actual footage of what they're doing. In fact, what you see here are those individuals, the scenes you see were actual cams on their helmets when they went into burning buildings and all this sort of thing. And what you're going to actually see is what they're telling, their story of why they are first responders in Rutherford County. So we can show that video, I'd like for you to see that.
It's a life and death job. My life depends on the person next to me, their life depends on me. We have to be there for each other at all times. If you're looking for comfort, you're looking for a place to make easy money, this isn't the place for you. Around here, it's a marathon, not a sprint.
I've been in the fire service about 10 years.
Coming here was one of the best decisions I ever made.
Best decision I ever made.
I've been here for 12 years, the best decision that I've ever made.
What drew me to the Rutherford County area, it wasn't so much the call volume, it was the culture of the fire service as a whole. I came from a very professional atmosphere, and we got to do a lot of training. But then I came here, and I felt like I was immediately being put to the test on my first day.
Rutherford County has been one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation for probably the last 10 years. There's no real signs saying that that's going to slow down anytime soon.
Aggressive searches, fast water on the fire, very citizens-first oriented, and we encourage getting in the building to get citizens out and to put fire out.
Most places, they put the fireman's safety first. That's your first day in rookie school, it's all about your safety, your safety. We really push the citizens. During the training, obviously, we're going to be as safe as we can, but when we go out on the street, it's a different, different story.
Last year, we had 173 total fires, 26 drone searches, 25 extrications, and 22 water rescues.
Overall population that we directly serve is 124,000 people, but if you include all the cities that we could mutilate into, it's over 320,000 people. Our county size is roughly 624 square miles. We're the fifth-largest county in the state of Tennessee, directly south from Nashville. It's not uncommon for us to travel up and down the interstate to assist any of our mutual aid partners.
We do regular live burns, usually a minimum once a month. They are very realistic. We burn real materials in real buildings. We do rig drills. We encourage flowing and moving, and we do a lot of vertical bench training as well.
We have a special operations team that can be deployed anywhere in the country, you know, with a moment's notice.
We're an all-hazards fire department here. We cover a lot of area, and we kind of have a lot of opportunity to see all different types of things. Aside from just the normal fire training that we do, we also like to focus on special operations, technical rescue-type training.
We also have a lot of unique rescue disciplines. We have a fire investigator division. Currently, we have two tactical medics that operate with multiple SWAT teams inside the county that do high-risk search warrants at barricades.
We have a lot of interstate, so we see a lot of hazmat. We have a lot of rail systems that run through our county, so the opportunity for that is pretty large. Aside from that, we do a lot of rope rescue scenarios. We're prepared for structural collapse, whether that's a house, or a barn, or any type of structure where someone could be trapped in. We're prepared to handle that and make it safe for entry and rescue.
This is a very suburban department, but it is very diverse. It's kind of a rural area with an urban interface. We have multiple interstates, highways, we work a lot of pen-ins from there. We have everything from old ranch-style houses to brand-new two-story attached garage neighborhoods.
We have a dive team, so we do a lot of rescue recovery with diving. Again, we work with the sheriff's office to recover stolen weapons, stolen cars, evidence for them. Also, obviously, we have a lot of lakes, so we're prepared for, you know, potential drownings for a rescue scenario there.
We have an extensive drone program, multiple drones, multiple pilots, usually searching for lost people.
If there's anything in the fire service that you want to do, you can do it here. You name it, we do it.
We create an atmosphere of thinking firefighters in this department. We don't create firefighters that are like robots and just do what they're told. We make sure that a fireman is not only confident in their skill, but they're competent.
It's a job that we all take very seriously, and I think that our training and our mindset show that every day.
We want people that have good work ethic, people that don't have to be told to do something, but they're going to be the first one to step up.
We don't plan on taking any backward steps with hiring new employees. We want them to be motivated, we want them to be servants of the community, and willing to come here and work hard.
We're looking for people that want to just be firemen. They want to be part of a fireman's fire department.
We have all of the tools in place here to train them to be great firefighters.
We work on a 48-96 schedule, switching over to 48-96s. I realize now that I'm actually rested.
We honor a lot of fire service traditions with our culture. We make sure that our guys are ready, we make sure that they're ready to perform their job to a fireman's standard, and not just to our state standards. We make sure that our guys are smart and aggressive in this culture. We make sure the guys understand that the citizens come first in this fire culture.
I cannot stress enough, waking up and looking forward to coming to work. It's the best job in the world. Each day is better than the last.
There's no better calling in life than knowing that you made a difference.
I can't speak enough about how much this is truly a family environment.
Here at our department, it's a family. We play a role in each other's lives, on shift and off shift. That family element really is the magic that makes this place special.
If you like going to fires, come to Rutherford County.
Yes, commissioners, I may have a birthday in two weeks, but there's still a lot of little boy in me. But when I saw that, I wanted to share it with you, because I'm quite proud of those guys. And I hope you are too, in what you saw here. If that's not one of the best recruitment videos you'll see anywhere, and it's working, it's not just shown here in Rutherford County, this is being shown nationwide, and we're getting comments all across the nation on this thing. And our guys did that and put it together. In fact, I think they told the chief to leave, and this was their idea. So I just wanted to share it with you.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Any other comments on that? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to stand and say that that video was excellent. When I was teaching in metro Davidson County schools, I facilitated a fire EMS class where I had to teach with a fireman. Of course, I had the educational credential, and the fireman, of course, had the experience. And I saw a lot of videos, introduced a lot of things to students. And I just want to say that that video was excellent.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, there's, Mr. Reed was telling me there's other places where they're playing the video, but is there a way we can put it on our channel?
Is it on there already?
Yes, they're showing it, I think, on there. I think they're trying to get it on what we're doing here. It's being shown areas where individuals who go and seek this type of employment, it's being sent all over the place like this.
Thank you.
And one last thing, is Mr. Sinclair here? If not, if you're watching, my wife's going to be very happy with you. Your mustache has made me give up on mine, so.
Any other comments, especially to the point? We'll move on. Item L15, Public Works and Planning. Chairman Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no report, and before you ask, my committee meeting is always the first Tuesday after the first Monday, which should be November 8th.
Yes.
Okay, unless we change it, as we have talked about in steering.
Thank you. Item L16, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Chairman Craig Harris.
Commissioners, Mayor Carr has appointed a chief of staff, his name is Eric Hennessy, and he was recommended by the steering committee, and we are bringing him before the full commission to be confirmed. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to approve Mayor Carr's appointment of Eric Hennessy as chief of staff. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Hope Oliver again.
Commissioner Oliver.
Just curious, how many candidates were considered?
I believe 16 is what I believe. Go ahead.
Commissioner, we had 16 applicants and two very high-qualified, excuse me, interviews.
Mr. Hennessy here?
Yes.
Yes. After we vote, we'll ask to suspend the rules and bring him up, if that's okay with you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. Eric is very qualified. I think he is a tremendous asset to this body, and I think he's going to do a really good job, and he's going to be a liaison between us and the mayor's office. And I think he's up to the task, and of all the applicants, Commissioner Oliver, I felt like he was the best. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other comments? All those in favor of that appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Kerry. I have a motion to suspend the rules to bring Mr. Hennessy up for comments. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to suspend the rules, Kerry. Mr. Hennessy.
If I could have just a moment to say a word?
Got more than a moment.
Okay. I'll make this as brief as possible. Chairman, commissioners, some of you I have worked with in the past, some of you I have known for years, some of you I have met recently, and some of you I haven't had a chance to get to meet yet. But it's my intention in the next few coming days, months, weeks, however long that may take, to try to sit down with each and every one of you, to have a lunch, or a coffee, or dinner, or something along those lines, so that I can get to know you better and know what your legislative priorities are, so that I may be able to better assist in being that liaison between the mayor's office and this commission. My office will be right up there in room 307, so at any time, you're more than welcome to come by and see me. Once I get a phone, I'll let you know what the phone number is, and you're more than welcome to give me a call as well. And once again, thank you all for your confidence. I know you have heard my son already today, so he is here in the gallery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Appreciate you being here. While Chairman Harris is coming back up, I think Eric's first day will be Monday, this coming Monday.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir. Mayor Carr.
Just so the commission knows, his office is room 307 here in the courthouse, and his door will always be open.
Thank you. For Mr. Harris.
All right, next on the agenda, commissioners, is a resolution clarifying the 2018 Resolution Regarding Committee Compensation. What this is about is we have had some situations to where a commissioner is being paid per dim, which means he has two meetings in one day, and he's not getting paid for that meeting, he's only getting paid for one, even though he's spending hours in both of them. So we, looking back and look at the resolution, it had two different terms per dim, and the other one was per meeting. So I want to read this resolution. This clarifies and takes away that, you know, ambiguous terms that we're dealing with right now. Whereas by previous resolution dated August 16, 2018, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit 8, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners increased the compensation for members of certain Rutherford County commissions and boards, I'm sorry, and committees, including the compensation for Rutherford County Board of Commissioner meetings and its respective standing committee meetings. Whereas the 2018 resolution uses the phrases "per dim," but also uses the phrase "per meeting" in describing compensation for attendance at various commission and committee meetings. Whereas the 2018 resolution ultimately resolved the compensation for various Rutherford County committees be increased by $50 per meeting. And whereas the 2018 resolution ultimately resolved that effective September 1, 2018, the per dim for county commissioner meeting shall be and hereby is $500 per meeting, and all commission meetings shall be and hereby is $250 per meeting. And whereas it is necessary and appropriate to clarify and resolve any potential ambiguity in the 2018 Resolution Regarding Per Dim Versus Per Meeting, language with respect to a committee compensation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby clarifies and resolves any potential ambiguity in the 2018 Resolution to wit. Payment for attendance at separate Rutherford County committee meetings, including the standing committee meetings of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, as outlined in the 2018 Resolution, that occur on the same day shall be paid on a per-meeting basis in accordance with the compensation schedule outlined in 2018 Resolution. Be it further resolved that nothing stated herein is intended to increase the compensation of county commission members in contravention of TCA 55107. Resolved this 13th day of October 22. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now we have discussion or comments. Robert, I'm sorry, Commissioner P.
I just had a quick moment and had talked to some other commissioners, and there was a concern that we would have to go back to 2018 and compensate from there. And what I'm saying is, if this passes, that the difference would be starting September 1 of this year. So there's no looking back or any compensation in arrears for commissioners that had been at committee meetings more than one per day. So there'd be no compensation. So there'd be no compensation from September 1 back.
Chairman P, this clarifying begins September 1, 2022. So nothing before is in there. This is right now. So anything going forward will be based on this resolution.
Other questions? Once again, this is just a clarification of something that's kind of been a loophole for a number of years, and we've made attempts to close that in the past, but we've not followed through on that, and this is something that really needs to be done. No pay increase. I think there's some folks that saw that on the agenda and looked like we were trying to raise our pay, but it's not. It's just clarifying what commissioners are paid for. Understood? Let's go on the board for this, if you would. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
One a yes, one abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
The last on the report is, we have begun our opioid distribution of settlement funds. We had our second meeting. I just want to tell you that I have been up here preaching for four years about the opioid epidemic, and I have bit off a pretty good chunk with this committee. It's a very, way more work than I ever thought. There's a lot of people out there that need our help. There's a lot of people coming forth, and as Rutherford County, we had to do our best part to try to help as many as we can. However, we cannot help everybody. I mean, as much as I wish I could, I just, it's impossible for us to do that. So we had to make some very tough decisions, and these things are coming up. Only thing I can report is we came up with our mission statements, we came up with our logos, and we came up with websites, and we came up with a purchase, I mean, a RFP. So organizations will fill out an RFP, and then we will review those RFPs, and then we'll award any funds if we feel that necessary. Other than that, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Let me kind of piggyback on that. I attended that meeting, I believe it was Tuesday morning, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm extremely impressed. Government is giving us some money to be able to spend. Example is, I've heard it's a little over $500,000 bucks to Rutherford County and our neighboring county, which, if I'm not mistaken, is Cannon County, is getting $15,000. So we've got a lot of money that can go very, very fast, depending on how many people we end up servicing. And let me just say that that, the rules and the policies and procedures that that committee is putting into place is very, very impressive. If you have the opportunity to attend any of those meetings, you would see exactly what I'm talking about. And let me just congratulate Chairman Harris on his absolute insistence that this commission stay on track as it relates to this epidemic that our world is facing, and Rutherford County is not exempt from that. And Commissioner Harris, his passion is visible to all of us. New commissioners, if you haven't seen it, you will, and I'll just congratulate him for taking this by the tail and leading our county in a direction that will serve those who have a special need in our county. Thank you, Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more thing?
You're recognized.
I need to let you all know also what we got. You all need to know this. Right now, we have in the bank $165,765.31. We had decided that we're going to put this in a local government investment pool where we will be receiving 2.45%. So those funds are going to be in a pool until, and make money until we distribute them. This is, I want to keep money in these funds, so this is, I want to tell you all every month how much money we have and what we've gotten. Thank you.
That amount. Could you repeat that amount?
$165,765.31 at a 2.45%.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into recess and conduct an executive session with our county attorney. So anyone, anyone who is a visitor will need to exit the chambers as we go into recess to have, once again, an executive session with our counsel. We're now back in regular session from our executive session. Our legal counsel has conveyed certain information and advice to us concerning certain legal matters. Are there any motions from the commission regarding the recommendations from our legal counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Chairman Pro Tim Gooch.
If I may. Mr. Chair, this motion concerns information that our attorney has provided us in our executive session concerning the county's claim against Brent Lloyd under certain insurance policies as it relates to the Gert litigation. The county's current outside coverage litigation, counsel has recommended transferring the handling of this matter to Attorney Brandon McWhorter as litigation counsel. Thus, I move that this commission authorize the substitution of Attorney Brandon McWhorter and his law firm in place of Bill Tate to serve as the county's outside litigation counsel in this matter, based upon the fee arrangements explained to us during our executive session. I so move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. For this, we're going to be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
One to one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Brings us back to our regular agenda, and any other business to be taken care of? Commissioner Paul Johnson.
I would just like to make a statement. Being the conservative individual that I am, my wife and I will be celebrating our 57th wedding anniversary this Sunday. And in lieu of a card, I would like to wish her a happy anniversary personally.
Is that a form of emotion?
If I want her to know that I said this, I'll let her know, okay?
Thank you. Any other business or announcements? Any others?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reed.
Just a reminder, if you hadn't already bought your Thanksgiving turkey, I'm getting ahead of everything here. November 12 is the Rockvale Rutherford Club's annual turkey shoot, 9:00 in the morning at the community center in Rockvale. Come on out. Hope you bring a good shotgun. There's a lot of competition there. If you don't want a turkey, you can either get a country ham or a slab of bacon, whatever. Lot of competition. You'll have to stand in line to shoot, but we shoot all day out there. So I'd like to see you out there.
Rockvale Turkey Shoot, where is it?
Rockville Community Center.
And what time does it start? What time?
9:00.
9:00 a.m. Very good. Any other announcements? Chairman Harris, sorry.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'd like to recognize Lisa Crowe. These that you have on your desk right here is your oath, and she had put this to where we can frame this. Lisa, thank you on behalf of me, and I'm sure I speak for every commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something we were told about in Health and Education, someone to pass it on, is that November 9, at the Rutherford County Health Department, is the Free Flu Shot Day. It'll be from 8:30 in the morning until 11:30. 8:30 to 11:30, November 9, Free Flu Shot Day. That's at the Rutherford County Health Department in the Murfreesboro location.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Any other announcements? Let me just close by saying, with the executive session, we've heard about things, and most of them are problems that we're talking about. Tonight, we had the opportunity to celebrate, and we need to do more of that. We've got people in our community who need to be recognized for their outstanding contributions to this community, and every chance we get, we need to celebrate those people and have something in common that we can cheer about. So I just want to thank you for indulging the alumni of the Smyrna High School in recognizing Mr. Robert Rakes and his contributions to the committee. If you're Bulldog and you know it, Commissioner Johnson, the results will surely show it. Commissioner Piercy, do you have something? Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
You've been trying to get that in.
We're adjourned.